Seven oh four, we will. Thank you, Mike. We will call to order the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Regular scheduled planning and zoning meeting for Ashford at again at seven oh four. Um, for seating, Doug, we will seat for Mark Schnabel. And if anyone sees a commissioner join later on, please let me know so we can make sure Valerie captures that. All right, welcome all. Um, couple of housekeeping items, obviously, the minutes from our May eighth meeting. Um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May eighth?
Uh, this is Janet. I'll move. We approve the minutes.
Thank you, Janet.
I'll second him, Alex.
Alex seconds. All those in favor?
Jeff, could I, could I make a point of order?
Sure, sure. Bill, go right ahead.
Um, I believe the minute should refer to my attendance as an ex officio as first selectman.
Bear with me, Bill. Okay, so you are correct. You were in attendance then. Okay, um, thank you. So, uh. We are looking for approval of the minutes with the addition of Bill Falletti as an ex officio member of the board. Can I get a whatever the word I'm looking for is, can I get a
Motion.
Motion, thank you. Wow.
Uh, Janet, I'll move.
Janet moves. Do I have my second?
I'll second.
Alex seconds. Uh, all is in favor of approving the minutes with the addition of Mr. Falletti as a ex officio member?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Absentions? So moved. Okay, um. Before we get into public comment, I just want to make a quick mention. There will be a change to the agenda in that the public hearing for PZ dash two, three, dash, seven. Uh, with the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission being the applicant will not be held tonight. Um, we need some further input from our legal counsel. I do appreciate some of the public comment that's been put in, but just so people aren't hanging on for that, if we go through public comment bills and anything else, I just want to make anyone who's here specifically for that aware that we will not be having that as a hearing or as a discussion item tonight. Um, okay, so, uh, public comment, uh, public comment for items not currently listed on the agenda. Do we have any public comment? And I see Christina Sebo with a hand up. Go ahead, Christine.
Yes, hi. Um, Ashford's supposed to be revising and updating our P O C D in the next couple of years. Can you tell me who's in charge of putting together the committee to work on that? And are people able to volunteer to be on it?
The, sure, the committee itself is generated out of either the entire, um, Planning and Zoning Commission, or we will work a subcommittee, uh, reporting back to that. Um, we would appreciate and do solicit help from both the commissions themselves that give input to the P O C D as well as public who wish to be a part of that.
So who's the contact person?
Uh, contact right now would be either myself as commissioner, uh, Janet Bellamy as vice chair or, um, uh, Mike Damato as our CEO.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, can you also tell me which, which, um, you just said the, uh, numbers of what wasn't going to be discussed tonight. What, what is that?
That's the hearing on the primary residence definition for amendment to our, our regs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will move on to bills. Bills being received. Alex, do you have anything?
No, just, just the Chronicle.
The Chronicle for seven fifty-one ninety-five. Thank you. Mike, do you have anything in the harbor?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have no, I don't have any correspondence at this point. Item number five. Alex, do you have anything?
No, everything we have is on the, um, meeting material.
Okay, very good. Okay, so that brings us to item number six and the opening of public hearings. Um, the, we will open the public hearing for PZ dash two, three, dash, two. A special application for section three hundred one, seven, one, or I, excuse me, one, for rural business at three Lakeside Drive owner applicant. And if I destroy your name, I'm very sorry on that. Um, that is going to be Kristen Moseco. Okay, close enough. Thank you. Um, again, our hearing, I'll remind for each of the hearings is that our hearing will run simply that we will hear from the applicant. Uh, based on their, uh, application and what it is they're requesting, we'll hear from the commission and staff for planning and zoning. We'll then hear from the public for public comment on that. And then we'll give the applicant one last opportunity to speak to the, uh, commission. Uh, for public comment, we do ask you limit your comments to three minutes or less. And, uh, we will move forward. Um, so Kristen, if you could, uh, come off mute and, uh, talk to us about your application.
Sure, uh, I am applying to have a small business in my, my new home on Ashford Lake. I do something called the Alexander Technique. It's a hands-on technique. It's an educational method where I typically work with one client at a time. It's fairly niche. Not many people know about it. Um, and I have four different locations and I would love to be able to offer it, offer this service in the, in, in Ashford as well. Typically, it's something that helps people with back pain. I'm a musician, so I often will work with musicians who are having instrument related injury, uh, neck pain, hand pain and things like that. And, uh, people sign up for sessions, they drive to the house and then they, um, they come in for an individual session. From there, um, in terms of, I don't plan on having any signage. Uh, this won't bring a lot of traffic into the area. I also have a location in Mansfield. I don't see myself having more than seven clients at different times throughout a single week, uh, coming to the house. Uh, is there anything else that I should cover that I haven't so far?
Um, if, unless you have more you want to share, and then the commission can have some questions of you, should they have anything for you? Is there anything else you'd wish to share with us?
Um, I think, I think that's it. Um, I, I just don't, I don't think it's gonna bring a lot of traffic into the neighborhood, that's for sure. And, um, I don't think it'll be any disturbance to any of the neighbors, so I'll, I'll leave it there, I guess. And if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to expand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I open it up to the commission for questions of the applicant of Kristen. I, I will, okay, sorry, go ahead, Janet.
Uh, I couldn't unmute myself. Um, I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to say, um, I know the property's on the corner of Hillside Drive, so I think, um, uh, traffic going in and out won't be, um, a burden to, to the neighbors. I agree.
Hillside or Lakeside?
She's on, she's on the corner of, um, Lakeside and Hillside.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So people don't, people don't have to drive down any of the more narrow or dirt roads around the lake to get there.
Okay. Um, I know in your original application, you had written down you had four prospective business locations. I take it you've narrowed that down to the single one in Mansfield you selected? By the time this has come around?
Um, I, I have, I have a location in Mansfield and I also have two locations in New York, so I'm driving back and forth between New York and, um, and Ashford and Mansfield, so.
Oh, okay, all right. So now I understand the four prospective, thank you. And, uh, the parking, uh, where you are, you're not, you're not expecting more than, as you said, uh, seven or so clients in the course of a week, so.
Right.
Probably if you have two in the same day, that would be busy.
Um, yeah.
So no more than maybe parking for two extra cars, is that viable?
I, I have enough, uh, my driveway's kind of huge by mistake. So, um, so yeah, there's plenty of room in the driveway. No one's gonna have you driving, uh, parked on the street. So, yeah, not an issue.
And Mike, I know we reached out to the, uh, Butters, I believe. Did we get anything back from them? Or did they make any, uh, comment to be shared at the hearing?
Uh, so yes, a public hearing sign was posted on the property. A butters were notified, legal notices were run. We have received no public input.
Okay.
I did have one of the Butters who did reach out to me and they just wanted to know what my business was and then they congratulated me. And that was, they said, we're rooting for you. So, nice neighbors.
Very good. And I will give the commission another opportunity to, uh, have any questions or clarifying comments or anything?
This seems like a pretty innocuous, uh, proposition, harmless in, in every way, but I just concerned about setting a precedent for, uh, uh, could that be a problem?
Could what be a problem, Nord?
Setting a precedent to allow this?
Rural businesses?
Yeah. Home, home businesses.
Well, we do have sections on home businesses, um, as rural, as well as rural business in our regs. Excuse me.
Uh, could you refresh my, uh, my knowledge of the zoning because, uh, where she lives, it's zone RA. Is that they allow home businesses in RA zone areas? Uh.
Yeah, I'll defer to Mike just for a second.
So this is basically a home occupation, but because she's going to have somebody coming to her house, um, it requires that it come before the commission, but rural businesses as defined in our regs are allowed in the RA zone, so she meets the criteria, but she has to come here for an approval instead of coming to staff. Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mike. No problem.
All right. Uh. Anyone else from the commission?
I'm good at this time.
Thank you, Doug. All right, at this point, I will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone, uh, wishing to share a public comment regarding, uh, the application for a rural business?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. This is Steve Rotalakis from Ashford Realty Trust LLC.
Yes, Mr. Rotalakis, go right ahead.
I, I just want to know when the last time the septic system at that property was upgraded, because there's certainly going to be an increase in flows with the additional, uh, patients that might be vis- visiting doctor Moseco.
Um, we had our, uh, because we redid the house, um, we had the, uh, septic inspected a year, less than a year ago. And it passed all the inspections through the town of, uh, through the, oh, I forgot the name of it. Um, in Mansfield, the, the folks there came and inspected the septic and found good working condition. And the sessions that people come to see me for are typically only one hour long. So it's not really, they're not there for an extended period of time.
So when you said seven patients or seven clients? And is that per week?
I, that's
I'm sorry, this should be through the chair. I apologize.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's fine, Mr. Ratalakis. No, thank you. Um, so again, uh, yeah, the seven, uh, clients are over the course of a week. Uh, in here, uh, your inspection of your septic system was done in the last year approximately. Um, and, uh, the sessions are not prolonged in any way, which one would couldn't say that there's going to be additional septic activity of any great nature. Uh, there's no addition of bedrooms, there's no stayover, there's nothing like that. Um, any other questions, Mr. Ratalakis?
Just, that, that was my comment, question.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Jeff, Paul Varga.
Yes, Paul.
Uh, I just wanted to want, uh, two comments. One, it's the corner of Lakeside and Hillcrest. Not also, that's a large, that's a big difference, two different areas. Um, and second, uh, cause I'm usually the guy that's complaining, I'll just say that I support this. I think it's a good idea, uh, it allows her to to, uh, expand her business with minimal impact. I mean, one car a day basically is what we're talking about. Um, I think in the summertime, there's probably more than that, that just drive around the lake on its own, on their own. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, here we go. Other public comment. I'll reach back to Kristen. If there's any closing remarks you wish to make, uh, regarding your application, we're listening.
Just thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, thank you. We do have you listed as, uh, discussion for new business at the end of the meeting. Should you wish to stay on, we will be having some discussion on that. Thank you. That will close the hearing for PZ dash two, three, dash, two for rural business application. Uh, we will move on to opening the hearing. Excuse me, say, find my. For, here we go. Yes, the PZ two, three, dash, six. Uh, text amendment application, article three hundred dash four, townwide temporary moratorium on warehouses, distribution centers and research facilities, including research and development, testing laboratories or centers. Applicant is, uh, Charles Vidic. Um, so again, I'll just remind everyone that the, uh, we'll hear from the applicant. Uh, we will then hear from commission and staff. Uh, we'll be open to public comment, ideally limiting your comments to three minutes or less. And then back to the applicant for closing remarks. So with that, um, and I believe is Mr. Vidic on?
Uh, yes, I'm on. I, I do have some slides, so if Mike Tomato can give me access to, uh, share the screen, that'd be great.
You should be all set.
You should be also.
Okay, let's see if I can do that then. I just have to, um, have to figure out where I am. Let me see. Uh, let's see. Uh, so, um, share a screen. Okay, here we go. Good. Uh, here we go. Okay, uh, well, my name is Charles Vidic and I live at forty Frontage Road in Ashford. I've been a resident of Ashford for forty-six years and even attended Ashford Elementary School in the nineteen fifties before Interstate eighty-four ever existed. I'm here tonight to discuss the benefits of establishing a moratorium for the interstate interchange development zone located on both sides of Interstate eighty-four. So the, uh, agenda basically is
We're not sharing your screen as of yet, Mr. Vidic. I'm sorry to interrupt. But we're not seeing anything. If you have the intent to have that up.
Oh, yeah, okay, hold on. Let's see what happened here. Okay.
Now you're showing. Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm showing. Okay, good. So there we go. We're in the twenty-first century here. So can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so basically the agenda of here is to, uh, uh, review the benefits and the restraints placed on the adoption of a moratorium if the commissions choose to do so and explain why this application has been submitted. So, um, based on the recent request for a change to the interstate, interstate, interchange development zone made by, uh, a developer, in this case, Mr. Ratalakis and his team became clear a planning pause was needed to allow the commission and its citizens time to deliberate on what is best for Ashford, not what is best for a single developer. The focus, um, is really interstate interchange development zone. But if you read the text of the proposal, it also addresses warehouse development as a townwide issue. Uh, so just continuing with this, a planning pause avoids being held hostage by a, a single developer proposal, so the commission and other boards have time to deliberate on appropriate development. As a professional planner, I've worked with Connecticut Planning and Zoning Commissions to develop zoning and subdivision regulations that meet their development goals. I've been doing this for over forty-five years. I've done a planning and zoning consulting work and I've been a town planner. I've written zoning regulations, subdivision regulations and done this in many parts of the United States. Uh, municipalities regularly need to revise their regulations due to changing development practices, evolving science, Supreme Court decisions and state legislation. So another aspect of this, uh, planning pause is to enable the commission to determine really what is best for the interstate interchange development zone without the pressure from a specific development proposal or any proposal that, uh, would not give the commission time to deliberate. And this really gives us the opportunity to evaluate best practices in zoning, the locational advantages from a business point of view of the zone uh, for businesses as well as for citizens, um, uh, in the town, for both businesses and citizens. That's the key is, this is not just about what's good for individual residents, but also good for the businesses that live in this town and work in this town. There are some other benefits. Uh, there are numerous ways to use a planning pause, including creating a subcommittee of the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission and taking that approach couldn't, uh, and should involve really other town boards uh, who have an interest in this, the Economic Development Commission, Inland Wetland Commission, uh, et cetera. And, and this also is an opportunity to bring in experts, whether they're pro bono or whether they're paid for uh, to advise a commission on best practices. So the moratorium that has been, uh, put forward in this text change does not specify the level of detail uh, that would, uh, basically what, what would happen. Basically what it does, it allows the commission to determine, uh, what is best to consider during the moratorium. Uh, and so that's a very important thing. Uh, it's basically giving the commission the time to deliberate without pressure. So, um, zoning concept to consider, uh, there are variety of, uh, zoning concepts, and I've been working this field for many years that the commission may want to consider in updating that particular zone. You know, what are acceptable uses, what are next unacceptable uses? Uh, and of course, the fundamentals of, of height, bulk, area, density, lock, coverage standards, all are part of that analysis. But you'll see in the text change that we've identified thirteen areas that could be looked at. It doesn't mean that they have to be looked at, but, uh, from my professional planner point of view, I, I could easily see where any one of the items that are listed would be a benefit to be reviewed. Following on a few mother, uh, uh, other points, uh, there are other environmental concerns that come into play uh, that should also be considered. Uh, for example, noise regulations effective as of last year. Uh, Ashford has the authority to write its own noise regulation without the approval of the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. In my opinion, that's a, a real opportunity for the commission. Uh, and of course, the same thing could be said about traffic impact studies. I've written many, uh, in, in, and managed many traffic studies uh, in developing a standard scope of work for what a traffic study would do uh, is above and beyond what the Connecticut Department of Transportation might offer uh, to get very specific with things that would be important, important and pertinent to the town of Ashford. So that's another example, but there's a host of specific aspects when you get into development and valves, trucks and traffic that, uh, the commission may want to consider. So these are just three, uh, of the thirteen items that are on the text change to give you an idea, but buffer standards, for example, is another. Whenever you have industrial, commercial land next to residential zones, having good robust, uh, buffer separations are key, and that's another area of an opportunity. So why have it, why have the residents of Ashford initiated this application? Well, uh, put it this way, during a planning pause, the commission can conduct market research and consultation with the Economic Development Commission and other boards to encourage collaborative decision-making. So conducting a strengths and weakness analysis above and beyond the locational advantage study uh, is an opportunity. So the Ashford residents that I've worked with have strongly encouraged me to submit this application to achieve these goals so that we really have a more robust review of what makes sense for this particular zone. Uh, let's see what we got here. Oh, I got this. Uh, let's see. Well, there we go. Uh, just to put this in perspective, for those who don't know, um, the Supreme Court in nineteen eighty-four established a moratorium as a legal tool. Um, in the case of Arnold Bernhard versus the Westport Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, that's an important thing to understand, although you'll not find that in the statutes, the Supreme Court has time and again uh, confirmed that a moratoria is a interim zoning concept, uh, makes sense and can be used. And there's a variety of, uh, uses that they have. Twelve months is what we put into this, although uh, they have gone for two years in some cases. Uh, but basically the whole point is restrictions on moratoria need to be time limited, physical area limited and development restriction limited. And really, as you'll see in what we're proposing, the restrictions relate to things that really are not even in the zoning regulations right now. Although plausibly they could be if they're functionally equivalent to the uses we're talking about. And, um, so for those who are familiar with, uh, moratorium, uh, moratoria, uh, primarily they've been used in, um, Connecticut for cannabis, uh, businesses, multifamily housing and by coincidence here warehouses as well. Uh, they're really a temporary restraint. Uh, it doesn't stop somebody from developing currently what's allowed under the zoning regulations. So that's an important point. Uh, and I think another thing that, uh, I'd like to just call attention, a lot of uh, people may not recognize that words have meaning and they're very powerful. So when, uh, just to take what the, the Ashford zoning regulations have stated and this is not a typical, most zoning regulations have this statement, use is not specifically listed in these regulations are prohibited except for uses lawfully established prior to the effective date of these regulations. So basically the key to this is that anything that is put forward for a modification, if you so choose to go forward with this concept needs to be very explicit and defined quite well. Uh, the strongest regulations in Connecticut are those who define terms. And so I would encourage, if you should go forward with something like this, uh, to have robust definitions so that it is easy to understand what a, uh, a warehouse is, for example, or a or a motel versus a hotel. All of these need to be very explicit to make decision-making easier and also for the customer, for the applicant, to understand what really is allowed. So, I just close here with the questions that may arise. You know, what possible role will the people who got involved with this have here? If there is an issue in there, what's the length of the planning, plan of conservation development? And what constraints may be imposed imposed by this, even though I've just mentioned what they may be? And the regulatory review process, any questions that may arise? And that's basically an overview. I did say during that proposal several months ago that I would be willing to assist the commission if it should so choose to go forward. So, that is something I didn't want to bring to the commission's attention, not that I'm any more special than anybody else, but I have spent 40 years in this and I've been recognized by the Connecticut Supreme Court as an expert, and I've been involved in over a dozen federal and state land use and environmental cases. So, I'm not new to this subject by a long shot. And I certainly do believe that Ashford is a town that does deserve to have the best practices, and I really do appreciate the opportunity to present to the commission. And I just close with any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vidic. So, at this point, I do open it up to both digest and offer up any questions from the commission of Mr. Vidic?
This is Dick Williams. I've got the most recent regulation in front of me. And Mr. Vidic referenced a section that if a use is not specifically named, then it's not permitted. And I can't find that in the copy of the regulations that I have. You said it's in Article 2. And then you said.
Article 2, Section 2.
Well, the sections are not labeled that way. It's Article 2, general provisions. And then each of the sections are labeled 300-4, 300-5, 300-6, et cetera. There's no what you're referencing to, I think, must be from a previous.
Dick, can I help you? If you look at 300-5, General Regulations, at A2. Page.
Yep.
Thank you, Janet.
Okay. Is one of the things when we had gone through and updated the definitions, we tried to take out, out of the various definitions, the very specific, and we didn't go back and update the general provisions when we last visited this. But we specifically, and I recall this because I had taken out, we had long lists of different items that were permitted or under the definition of different, like if it was manufacturing, it listed a whole range of different types of manufacturing. We took out those long lists of items in the definitions. And, you know, the idea was is that we couldn't think of every possible use that was possible when we would write this, and hence, we didn't want to limit the uses, you know, to very specific items within the list of permitted uses. So, and I will admit that we did not change or go into the general provisions. And we did not update that. But that kind of what that general provision does say there kind of goes against the tenet of how we had treated the definitions when we revised this back a couple of years ago. Am I ringing any bells for anyone who was part of those?
No, no, Dick. I remember reducing down the specific lists and such like that, but that was in an effort to also improve the definitions such as as, you know, what you identified, manufacturing, the making, processing, assembling, or fabrication of materials, goods, and wares by manual labor or machinery. I mean, that, that covers quite a bit as to someone who came in wanting to be a manufacturer of some type or something like that.
And the original definition had about a dozen examples appended to that definition. And what we tried to do is, is make the definitions general, not specific. That's my only point I bring it up, and we didn't go back into the, and update the general provisions at that time that was left for another date, but like and that kind of comes to the point where we're talking about you know, the general commercial industrial uses for the IID zone. You know, we didn't list every commercial and industrial use that could possibly be done. We expected to, you know, include those since everything would be done on a special permit and it would come up for discussion at the time when we would be going back over it. So, anyhow, that's just my comment. And if anything, the intent that I had when I revised the definitions is somewhat in conflict with what is listed in the general provisions, which we didn't update at all till at the last revision.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes, Nord.
We spent a lot of time on this. This is a development area that you're talking about. So, it's slated for development. And we spent a lot of time restricting the type of development that could happen there. And I remember when we were crafting these regulations, we looked at a lot of different details on it. And I don't think it would be fair to the landowner to restrict him further for a whole year on the ownership of this property. Because something in the past happened that you're not sure about. And we did spend a lot of time, and there's a lot of restrictions on development, and we, and it is a development area. Now, there's a business that is operating in that area that's, no one, no one complains about. It's a manufacturing area, and they're doing well. And they like their location, and nobody complains about it, and they comply with all of our regulations. We want more of that.
You want me to respond to that?
Ah, I don't know if there was a question in there. It's more of a statement, but feel free to go ahead, Mr. Vidic.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Commissioner, the moratorium as proposed does not stop anything that's currently allowed.
So, to that end, I'll have a question here. If a developer submitted a plan for a 200,000-square-foot building doing retail or auto parts manufacturing, there wouldn't, you, the Keep Ashford Rural Group and such, would not have an issue with that as long as it met all the current regulations, both in building standards as well as use?
Right. I mean, this is not prohibiting what's currently allowed. The moratorium is just addressing those things that are not in the regulations so that another application of the type that happened before would not occur. However, when a moratorium is created, at that point, you can decide to do what you want to do. But in the interim, whatever is allowed currently, it would be allowed. That's the whole purpose of a moratorium. They're not legal, and they've not been upheld by the courts. If they're broad brush, they have to be very narrow in their focus, both in time and in terms of the limitations on the uses of land and the physical areas affected. So, it doesn't change any of the current zoning in terms of what's currently allowed. It only deals with potential for things that are like what were proposed before or functionally equivalent to those, but not what's currently allowed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ritalakis.
Ritalakis.
Ritalakis, I'm sorry.
No problem. That's not what the, that's not what the proposal says, though.
If you could just hold your comment for right now, because right now.
I can hold it.
Thank you.
That's not what it's.
Because right now, we're in with the commissioner, the.
I understand.
Thank you. So, also with that, Mr. Vidic, doesn't, in your experience, doesn't the the requirement for the moratorium also require a reason why, a significant or substantive reason why for the, for not, you know, not to be challenged or anything? You know, you talked about time, you talked about focused land area and such like that, but also, doesn't there need to be a substantive reason for the commission to put aboard a moratorium?
Well, the substantive reason for doing it is what happened in the last three months, which is the mega warehouse proposal. And so, it's really giving the commission an opportunity to look at some of the details here. And honestly, within the current regulations, if I may say, even though it's currently allowed anything that currently exists, I do believe from a professional planner's point of view that the commission would be benefiting the town at looking some of the specific land development standards that are applied to this particular property as well as those on the south side of Interstate 84. The one thing in the proposal that does say explicitly the commission should do is to distinguish what I call parcel A from parcel B. Parcel A is, is the property on the north side of Interstate 84 from parcel B only because the landowners, TUMACs, have much different interests in what should happen to the land. But even that distinction doesn't say what would be done. So, if the commission decides to make no distinction, they just call them the same thing, even though this proposal says to distinguish them. There's nothing specifically that says how to distinguish them. But I too, I personally believe, having spent a goodly amount of time with the TUMACs owners, that they believe that their land has slightly different constraints or not opportunities than the other side. So, even if it doesn't get distinguished, I believe it's in the interest of the commission to at least look at that issue.
Yep. Thank you. Ah, Richard, did you say something?
Yeah. What has been presented in the presentation differs quite a bit from what is in the text of the moratorium that's being proposed. You know, he mentioned the idea of dividing the IID into two zones, one on one side of the highway, the other on the other side of the highway. It also calls the, a moratorium on warehouse distribution centers. But if you look at the zoning regulation as it exists right now, one of the special permitted uses is wholesale and distribution. So, he's, he's, it's somewhat contradictory that your, your text of what you want to put in force differs from what you've presented. You're proposing moratoriums on things that are special permitted uses in our existing regulations.
Well, I used the word warehouse, and I did not use the word distribution center specifically because those are different terms. In fact, under the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they are distinct issues. And so, from the point of view of a land use planning, this specifically proposal deals only with warehouses, not with what the current regulations have. That's why the words are very explicit here. The word distribution center was not included.
And when it comes to the request for the moratorium, the application, the first part is actually identifies the moratorium request itself, whereas the lengthy, multi-item discussion, if you will, or input at the bottom is is that part of the moratorium in your application, or is it simply areas being suggested to be reviewed by the commission?
If you'll look at that, you'll see the word in here, items to be reviewed are specifically in that sentence. It says, this will be achieved by creating Interstate Development Zone A and B, as we've talked about. Even though there may be an issue about what those are, that's the only thing that's distinctly saying, look at that. But when you get to the next part of that, it says items to be reviewed, and that's all it is. During the moratorium include but are not limited to, and there's 13 items. So, it really is a list of things to look at. You could decide to dismiss all of them, but the idea here is to give some ideas of things that really coming as a professional planner, I believe, are worth considering. Now, the commission may think entirely different and decide that not all of those are really relevant. But I believe that from a professional planning point of view, it's in my professional ethics to present to you things that really should be brought to the commission, but the commission may decide not to do them because it's simply a review checklist. There's nothing that binds you to any of those other than to look at them and decide yes or no.
Okay, thank you. So, again, so again, actually, the actionable moratorium itself is kind of held in that first paragraph, whereas the remainder is procedure or methodology, again, items to be looked at that might, that I don't see as being part of the moratorium, as being more of the functional effect of the commission to look at these areas, potentially, look at these areas to better address the fit and fiber, the needs of the town as well as the area itself when it comes to zoning.
Yes, I agree 100%. That other part of it is really a laundry list that could be completely eliminated or expanded, however you choose, but you're right, absolutely right. It's the first paragraph that's really dealing with the actual substance of, of the procedure. But in the interest of at least putting out the ideas, I thought it would be important to at least have a checklist of things that I believe as a professional planner are worth consideration. And of course, the commission can choose to do otherwise or choose to accept them. However, the commission chooses to.
Yeah, I would, you know, looking at your proposed moratorium language and focusing on the first paragraph, not getting hung up on what you put down as the things to consider. You specifically say you have a moratorium on warehouse/distribution centers. And I want to come back to the fact that wholesale and distribution is one of the permitted uses that's in the existing regulation. So, you're proposing that we put a moratorium on items that are already special permitted uses in our regulations.
Well, if that's the case, that would have been an error in terms of my understanding of what the regulations were.
Well, I've got them open right in front of me, and what I'm referring to is general commercials. Okay, anyhow, I lost the page that I was on. But at any rate, you also, in that first paragraph, you specify townwide, not just in the IID area. You're proposing that this be a townwide moratorium.
Yes, I included that language in there, but the pri, a premise of this is for the Interstate. primers of this is for the Interstate Interchange Development Zone. But that was included in the interest of making sure that this dealt with the issues of potential warehouse applications elsewhere, even though the focus is really on the I I D zone. So yes, that was included, and I did mention that in my presentation.
And just to be clear, I'm looking at three hundred nineteen for the I I D zone on their special permitted uses C. The only word distribution I see is tacked on to value-added products and the distribution of agricultural products. The, excuse me, the processing of such products, agricultural as added value products and the distribution of agricultural products. Am I missing distribution somewhere else?
It's it's under the commercial zone. And the idea is that this is industrial, commercial. So it's it's included as a much more expansive list under the commercial zone.
I see. And okay, so now I get it because you're referring because the the moratorium is on townwide as opposed to just the I A D zone. Okay, sorry.
Well, if that's an issue, of course, you know, we could delete that townwide component if that that's an issue. Although I was not aware that that was an issue in another part of town.
And of course, those warehouse, those wholesale and distribution areas are limited to twenty-five thousand square feet in total area. In the commercial area, in the commercial zones.
What page is that on?
Uh, three hundred point or colon forty-three, or otherwise known as section three hundred eighteen C.
Okay, thank you.
Bullet point twelve, I believe, right, Chuck?
Yes, the wholesale and distribution statement, right? But in the body, in the permitted uses, it does talk about not to exceed twenty-five thousand square feet in total floor area in the commercial zone.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Jenna.
I'd like to thank Mr. Vidic, and I think his his suggestions of what to look at are certainly worthwhile. And I think the committee, commission agrees we need to look at, look at these regulations. But since these are all special permitted uses that would come before the commission and we are elected, I just wonder why you think we can't handle them on our own.
Well, I would say the special permit regulation varies from town to town in terms of how it's done. One of the things I do recommend is that take Stonington, for example. They have special permit regulations that are specific to each type of land use development strategy that may come forward. And when a municipality has a special permit regulations with conditions and evaluation criteria, which are generic, they apply regardless of what type of development occurs in a particular zone. You don't have the level of nuance and ability to deal with issues when there are not specific special permit regulations that are tied to a land use type. It assumes that if you have one type of special permit controls for everything in that zone, that they all have the same impacts. And that's something that as towns evolve, particularly suburban urban towns, they've actually gone and developed more precise definitions for special permit uses within a zone to be able to have better controls over land uses that may be entirely different in terms of their environmental or traffic or noise impacts, all within that same zone. And so rather than having to manufacture these on a case-by-case basis, it allows a commission to have special permit regulations that are tied to the concerns that may be connected to a variety of impact types that come from development in any particular zone. And that's one thing that distinguishes more suburban towns from rural towns. But there are some advantages in having more specific special permit controls, particularly when there are distinctions in the types of impacts, the traffic, noise, buffer zones, et cetera. That that can be a significant issue when they're not all the same in terms of their impacts of those issues.
But it's my understanding we can add, we can add restrictions to the special permits if we so desire. And I understand what you're saying.
But there's a there's a limit to how much you can add if it's not in the regulations already. That's a significant issue. There is a constraint there. Well, the Supreme Court normally airs on the side of protecting the municipality in decision-making, which is the best thing possible. The more explicit the regulations, the easier it is for the commission to make decisions and likewise easier for the applicant to understand the consequences of their proposals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Anything else from the commission at this point? I'm sorry, Doug, your box lit up yellow. Did you say something? Did you?
No. No, but I, since you did call on me or mention my name, I think I'll say a couple of comments. Like, as I'm reading the moratorium draft language, I do see the intent, however, the sequence of words does make it a little confusing as to truly what is going on. For example, the first paragraph cites throughout town. So it sort of implies that it's the entire town, but the very last paragraph doesn't really come back to that point and just focuses on the I I D. And then the middle paragraph, as we spoke, are really suggestions to the commission, but it starts with a will also distinguish, which is fairly direct. So I'm just guess I'm a little scratching my head a little bit about the wording in terms of what the action would be should should this move forward?
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Anything else from the commission? Okay. So at this point, I would like to open it up to public comment. And we'll start with Steve, if you wish to make your comment now that you had started to.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of preliminary matters. Stephen Roto Lake is for Ashford Realty Trust LLC. Just a couple of preliminary, preliminary matters, excuse me. Mr. Vidic himself submitted this petition. He doesn't represent anybody, doesn't represent an Ashford residence, he doesn't represent Toolmax. He's not an attorney. He doesn't represent anybody. He submitted it himself. Now, with respect to the article itself, I read the first paragraph and by and large, okay, the first paragraph is, I see what he's looking to do, he's looking to do it townwide. Just the last sentence in that paragraph, and I'll just read it to you, Mr. Chairman, and the other members of the commission. Given the existence of pyrotite in the subsurface geology underneath the I I D zone, development constraints will impact the scale of development and the level of acceptable disturbance of existing land contours. I don't know that. I don't know why that has to be there. It seems surplusage. I'll get into my more general comments. I'm just going through his language right now. But that's I may, when I bought this property close to twenty years ago, I may have had some geotech. I couldn't find it. I don't know whether there's pyrotite there or not, but certainly Mr. Vidic does. With respect to his suggestions, so be it. But the last paragraph, excuse me, first paragraph is what he's looking to do. The last paragraph is the implementation. And again, I'll read it. I won't bore the commission members, but the expiration date of this moratorium shall not exceed twelve months from the effective date of adoption, unless extended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. No text amendments or zone changes will be accepted that affect the Interstate Interchange Development Zone. Furthermore, no application will be accepted or heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So if I had any application to submit, this moratorium would prohibit it. Excuse me. And no approvals will be given by the Planning and Zoning Commission for new truck and truck and freight terminals, warehouses and/or distribution centers and functional equivalent development proposal during this period. This moratorium also includes any proposals for subdivision or bundling of adjacent property during the moratorium. And that's probably unconstitutional, number one, but I don't understand he's essentially saying that I have, if I have two parcels within the I I D zone, which I do, I can't combine them for the purposes of a development? That's absurd. Finally, note, this moratorium will become effective thirty days after approval by the commission. That's not what it says as to the first sentence as to this implementation paragraph. Okay, my general comments are as follows. Again, as you, the commission knows, I am the owner of most of the properties in the I I D zone that were subject of prior requested text amendments, which comprised the vast majority of this zone. I have owned these parcels since two thousand and six, paying close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in real estate taxes to the town over that period. After the first application was denied back in two thousand and twenty, the commission told me that you'd be taking up existing regs to improve the likelihood of having development, and you would be reaching out to me. I heard nothing from you and saw no activity relative to this cause on your subsequent minutes or agendas. Most recently, I believe that most, that both Campanelli and I responded to your comments and your P O C D and the comments made during the deliberations on the two thousand and twenty application through our two thousand and twenty-three application and presented a very substantive and responsive application that would have led to much higher tax revenue for the town, as well as being protective of the environment. Again, I respect your decision. That's that's your decision. My understanding is the P C Z, P Z C can reject for just about any reason. I have no I have no practical means of appeal. So I have to respect the decision. But it's a, but I believe that you the reasons which were stated were kind of fuzzy, and I don't believe were supported by the record. Now, today, I find it curious that you're considering a moratorium when we made it clear that the existing regulations you have in effect is a practical moratorium for many development. Again, I've owned this since two thousand and six. And the two denials in two thousand and twenty and twenty-three have made it pretty clear the that you don't want this type of development, apparently, in the I I D zone, which I think is unfortunate. But if the commission wants to make revisions to the regulation, once again, like I did after the commission shot down the two thousand and twenty application, I'd be happy to work with you and your consultants. But that said, I don't think you should be influenced by self-appointed experts like Mr. Vidic, who would prefer nothing be built there. If that's the case, then the town should buy my property. Finally, I'd be remiss in saying that if I submitted an application that purported to affect Mr. Vidic's home, which is across the highway, I can only imagine what his outrage would be at my at my application. Again, thank, I would like to thank the commission for its consideration. I'm not, I'll reserve the right to comment further as the night goes on.
Thank you, Mr. Rotolakis.
Roto Lakis.
Roto Lakis. I always go short short vowel, I'm sorry.
It's
Lake, like lake. Like a lake.
Yes, thank you.
Almost like it sounds.
Yes. Almost like it's spelled.
Yes. Okay, seeing hands up here. Christina Sebo, please go right ahead.
Thank you, Christina Sebo, ninety-one Perry Hill Road, Ashford. So you asked, someone asked what the substantive reason for the moratorium. I think one of the most important ones is something I'm going to address. So the recent text amendment proposal earlier this year by developers who wanted to increase the size of permissible buildings and acceptable uses in the I I D zone brought intense focus to the characteristics of the land in that zone. And as a result, much more is now apparent about all of the geology, hydrology, and other aspects of the site that raise concerns about the kinds of development that would be acceptable here. Also apparent is how much is not known about the site and its characteristics. The proposed moratorium would give our town the chance to fully understand not only what kind of land we're dealing with, but also how we should deal with it. It's not just vacant land that only has the value of being next to I eighty-four. The most alarming information about the I A D zone that has surfaced is about the bedrock geology of the site, bedrock that contains pyrotite. As you've heard, pyrotite is the mineral that was used in concrete for foundations of thousands of homes and other buildings in Connecticut and Massachusetts. Foundations that cracked and crumbled and have resulted in enormous expense, heartache, and loss. This is according to a deep website. Beyond the hazard of sulfides such as pyrotite in concrete, blasting and rock crushing operations involving sulfide materials can have an impact on environmental quality by causing acid drainage, which is detrimental to drinking water quality and can have ecological impacts. In the letter I submitted for this hearing, it's in the public record, I give a link to the deep website that has maps that show that bedrock containing pyrotite is along the I eighty-four corridor and in a large part of Ashford. Mr. Roto Lakis should maybe look at those maps. A link on that website is to a guidance document for use by land use officers and by developers before, during, and after suspect bedrock is disturbed. It also lists resources for evaluative expertise. Now, Ashford's I I D zone on the north side of I eighty-four is a hillside. And any development for large buildings will require blasting, major disturbances to the bedrock, and likely release of what deep calls the geo-hazard of pyrotite and other sulfides, if indeed they are present as suspected and as indicated on the map. The fact that the I A D zone is home to the pristine wetlands and watersheds of a major river that supplies water to several downstream towns and neighboring wells makes the potential of pollution damage by blasting disturbance of pyrotite sulfide containing bedrock particularly alarming. Our zoning regulations must reflect the care that must be taken to develop responsibly in and around this crown jewel of our town and to avoid reckless construction practices. I hope that commission will adopt some version of this moratorium. You have the ability to change what kind of moratorium you create here and embrace it as an opportunity craft and hone our zoning regulations so the I I D zone can be developed in a thoughtful and responsible manner. This only gives you the chance to spend a year changing the regulations that you've said, that you said in twenty twenty, and you said in twenty twenty-three you were going to look at and revise. So this would give you the opportunity to do that and some kind of benchmark issues to deal with in in doing those revisions. So I think that's the, those are the substantive reasons for the moratorium. Okay, I thank the commissioners for their many hours devoted to our community and to this particular issue in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Uh, Margie Roy.
Good evening.
Here we go.
I am Margie Roy from two twenty-one Old Town Road in Ashford. I support the idea of a moratorium, and I'd like the P Z C to seriously consider some form of moratorium on the I E. on the IED, IID zone, or for any immense projects in Ashford. Uh, my reason for this is throughout the last three months, I kept hearing the applicant state that we didn't need to worry about us not having regulations, that the state regulations would cover it. The state would inspect it, state regulations would come in on the special permit. I haven't found that the state regulations are always in the best interest of Ashford. If you look around Ashford at the places where the state has had an impact, like traffic, like the Cumberland Farms, like Dollar General, um, gas station problems, they have not really paid attention to Ashford and what Ashford needs. And I think it's critical that Ashford needs to change its regulations to protect itself and to make Ashford what Ashford wants to be. The state of Connecticut doesn't do that. It worried me greatly throughout the whole application process that they kept saying the state would take care of it. If we want to protect Ashford, we have to have those regulations in our zoning regulations. We cannot rely on the state. And so I would strongly encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to put a moratorium in place so that you can look at our regulations and think about Ashford and what Ashford needs now. It is changing, and we do need more regulations. I thank all of you on the commission for all of the work you have done and for the hours that you have spent listening to us. It is valuable and is, it is important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Uh, next up, uh, Mrs. K, Ms. K, could you identify yourself, please? You're on mute at this point also.
I am.
Okay, we can hear you.
Hey, I'm Kristen Smith, 745 Westford Road in Ashford. Um, I'd like to speak in favor of the moratorium, and I'd just like to state that as I read it, um, it would not affect, um, development as currently stated for people that already own property that bought the property with those, with the knowledge of what they could do there. So this is just, as I read it, something that will put a pause button on other types of development throughout the whole town is also how I read it. Um, and I think this is important because what's happening right now, not just in Ashford, not just in Connecticut, but all across the U.S., is that rural towns with lower incomes and small populations are kind of the last place to be plundered by large corporations. Um, they use the carrot of tax breaks to settle here and create something different than what people who live here want. Um, essentially, we'd become part of the sprawl that already exists all over the place. Um, instead of moving to more and more rural locations, maybe we can just preserve what we have. And in the process of this pause, we can also examine what we want for Ashford in general. We don't not want business, we just don't want certain types of development. And it's kind of important, I think, to maybe take a step back and have that opportunity to examine what we want to set for regulations for the town that we love and that we want to stay the way it is. I harkening back to tax breaks, um, I spoke with some friends in Middletown who, as we know, is a fairly well-developed town, and they're paying the same amount in property taxes as I am for a much smaller piece of property. And granted, they have a professional police force and a paid fire department and a larger public school. But do we, we have an excellent fire department, we have an excellent school, we don't have a police force, that would be cool, but we don't have it. It's all about what do we want? Um, and this is just a one-year moratorium to allow everything to take a step back to determine what it is we want for the future of the town. What, what kind of businesses do we want? We want them. But how should this proceed? Because it's happening everywhere. If we just, if we don't take a look at it, you know, we could become the next Windsor, South Windsor. Um, anyway, that's my reason for supporting this moratorium.
Thank you very much. Uh, Paul Varga.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna, I, I don't even know how many ways to say I oppose this moratorium. Um, over the last three months, I guess it's been, I've been personally attacked uh, for my support of the previous text amendment. Um, and I see this, this tech, this text amendment as basically a childish reaction to a legitimate text amendment that the Planning and Zoning Commission followed the, the procedure on and denied, or however you want to look at it, uh, the text amendment. So this is just a way to basically make sure that these, Mr. Vidic himself, I guess, because again, he's not representing everybody in town. He certainly isn't representing me. Uh, he certainly isn't representing the landowner. Um, so I, I just think it's a reaction to something that basically i- in, in the big scope is I don't want it in my backyard. Some of the, uh, uh, people who were proponents of the, this current text amendment, we're talking about, how about we put a Trader Joe's in, or maybe other towns want the warehouse, but we don't. Um, and, and I, I take upset, uh, yeah. I'm a little tired, I'm sorry. I take opposition to Mr. Vidic's comment that he's representing the townspeople of Ashford. Um, you know, nobody counted how many driveways didn't have a sign. They counted all the signs, but nobody counted the driveways that didn't have a sign. Um, there's a term for that called survivorship bias, um, where people only look at what they want to see. Um, I think that that was an enormous fault on a lot of people. Um, if this amendment, if this current text amendment for the moratorium I want to go through, the implications uh, are quite far-reaching, the way that, that is written right now. At myself as a large property owner, um, I, I would look at it as devaluing my property, property, even though I'm in an RA zone, it would devalue my property instantaneously. Um, and consequently, the passage of this would have effects that I don't think anybody can quantify at the moment. But moving forward, the harm that will come to the town to, to basically block something for a year, maybe two, that has already been discussed, and if somebody comes back with another amendment or another special permit, as, as the commission has discussed, it would have to go through the same process. This is just, again, a childish reaction to something. Um, the applicant himself admitted he's trying to stop a specific type of development. Um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read my notes and it's getting dark. Um, and I, I guess my final comment is this, if these people are so opposed to any development in the IID, then I would recommend they get their group together, gather the funds, and go approach Mr., and I can't say his name tonight, Steve.
Rota Lakus, I know what it is.
Go approach Mr. Rota Lakus with an offer to purchase the property to keep it however they would like. Because the fact of the matter is, he purchased the property, it's an investment. He, he pays taxes on it. Uh, he takes care of it. Nobody knows what's underneath it until somebody digs a hole, and I don't know who's gonna make that happen. Uh, unfortunately, the PZC would have had some power to do that previously with the text amendment, had the building plans actually been pushed forward with a special permit um, at somebody else's cost. Well, so that's all I'm gonna say. I just think this is just the wrong direction for the town. A hundred percent the wrong direction for the town. It sends the wrong message to so many people, myself included. Thank you. And thank you for your service and your time doing this, because I know how hard it is.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, next up, Sue Levin.
Good evening, Chairman and, and Commissioners. The first thing I want to say is a huge thank, oh, 194 Old Town Road. The first thing I wish to say is a huge thank you to all the members of the PZC for their hard work over the last few months and, and for thoughtfully defeating the text amendment last month. I think I speak for the citizens of Ashford with great appreciation. We understand what a difficult position you are all in and how much time the volunteer work you are doing takes away from other aspects of your life. Again, I say thank you. I'm specifically speaking in support of the amendment to the zoning regulations for the proposed moratorium. I believe this will give our town the opportunity to develop a clearer picture of how we can continue to keep Ashford rural. I'm hopeful that through the use of the moratorium, the PZC will be able to craft regulations that are more in keeping with the P O C D while fulfilling the need for development in our town, specifically in the IID zone. Others have spoken about specific issues which may have not been addressed by the developer, so I will not repeat them. Rather, just ask that you fully consider the impact large development on that site would have on the community and the environment, both in the immediate area and further away. Thank you for your time and your work.
Thank you for your comments. Paul, your hand is still up. Was there anything else or just a not computer thing?
Sorry, I'll, I'll take it down. I'm on my phone and it, it just.
No problem. No problem. I, I, I'm just impressed you're using your phone, because I wouldn't be using it that way. Thank you. Um. Before we go to Christine, do you have, does anyone else have any other comments? It's Mississauga had been listened to before. Not seeing a hand or anyone waving at me. Uh, go ahead, Christine. If you're speaking, you're still on mute.
Sorry, sorry. Um, there, there seems to be some catastrophizing about moratoriums that, you know, they would really stifle things and really put us in some kind of horrible position. The town of Mansfield has a moratorium that was, uh, it gave them time to look at the cannabis issue. I think that got re-upped for another year, and they just put in another moratorium on, um, some development piece, um, to give them time to look at that and the issues around that. So it's not a unique kind of thing to do. It just gives you time. And, you know, for the Planning and Zoning Commission, you guys need all the time you can have, as far as I'm concerned. So, um, I, I, I look at this as an opportunity, and I think it would be a good thing if you could take it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rota Lakus.
Yes, thank you. Uh, again, I just reiterate, why do you need a moratorium on any warehouse or distribution when it's not allowed in the IID zone? Um, if, why should my hands be tied if I have some use that, uh, is compliant either as of right or by special, actually, everything's by special permit in that zone, excuse me. Uh, by special permit that you might like. Why would we have a moratorium? It makes no sense.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public at this point? Again, seeing no hands, seeing no one waving to try and get my attention. Uh, let me just page over. Are you sure I'm not missing a page? Anyone? No. Uh, I will go to, uh, Mr. Vidic and as the applicant for final comments.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Just, uh, in terms of the comments that were raised, the, um, whole purpose of the application for the, uh, moratorium i- is not to stop all development, but to stop very specific development types. So the commission has time to come up with what would be appropriate um, for that zone. A- and to Mr. Rota Lakus's concerns, uh, I, I spent many years of my life in the economic development world, actually working, developing warehouses and distribution centers, so I have a great deal of experience in that arena. Um, and I would think it's important for Mr. Rota Lakus to recognize that if this moratorium were to be, uh, submitted, uh, you should also be part of this process. I, I've never been against economic development. Um, if you knew my resume and what I've done, you'd recognize that it's not against all developments, it's against specific types of development that are going to be appropriate. And in order to do that, Mr. Rota Lakus, you have to be part of this process. Uh, this is not something to keep you out or Mr. Varga out. Uh, in its very short time, a 12-month period goes by very quickly. So this is both a challenge for the commission if they should do it, uh, because it takes a while to develop something that both the landowners and the community will find effective. So there's nothing in what we're trying to do to stop development. It currently allows for whatever's currently allowed. Um, and so the idea, though, is for what is specifically listed as not being allowed. Uh, so that's a very important thing. It's not to stop economic development at all. I may be a, a mile away from this location, uh, but that is not the only thing that brings me to the table. Uh, obviously, it is one factor. Everyone has an interest in the town, not just those who are nearby. People even the south of Ashford have concerns when traffic, uh, truck traffic goes through on 89 all the way down. I took noise measurements of what trucks do along, uh, Route 89. Um, and it dramatically changes the nature of residential zones when truck traffic becomes a major component, particularly with large, uh, uh, truck traffic generating facilities. So there is a need for a community to work cooperatively, both uh, with the interests of the landowners, but also the interests of the community. That's the whole nature of what a planning and zoning commission's role is. But this is a very short uh, pause in the planning process. It's not a permanent one. It's not the end of the world. Uh, it doesn't affect land values during that 12-month period, because during that period, uh, no one knows what is going to be created at the end, if indeed the commission decides to go forward. Uh, but I do believe that, uh, even if the commission were to turn it down, I think the commission still has uh, to do some thinking about what's appropriate uh, in order to satisfy Mr. Rota Lakus's concerns about development, as well as the town's, uh, concerns. So I think this is the advantage of having a collaborative process. And believe me, I'm not against economic development. I, I've worked on many distribution facilities in my career all over the United States. And I've never been against them, but the place where they're located is an important variable. Uh, and there's, and there are factors that go into citing these facilities. Uh, and as a professional planner, um, these are important variables that a community needs to look at. So uh, hon- honestly, I, I do think it is, uh, worth doing. It is rather unusual, Mr. Rota Lakus, that we should have done it as an individual citizen. I believe normally this is what a planning and zoning commission would do. Uh, but because of the timing of this and because of, uh, the situation at hand, there are many people, in fact, for those who don't know, there are over 1,200 people in this town who signed a petition against this proposal uh, that was there for the mega warehouse. So this is not just one individual. These are actually hundreds, in fact, thousands of people who actually had a position on this matter. So I, I'm not really representing myself here. Uh, I was asked to do it because I have some experience. But really, uh, it's really up to the commission to decide whether it's worthy or not. Believe me, it's not up to me to decide this. But I felt it was appropriate for the commission to at least uh, see some of the things that could go into a, a planning pause period. Uh, and not to stop development, but just stop specific types of development for only a 12-month period. So I think, uh, uh, Chair, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that probably would do it. I, I do appreciate all the comments that were received by Mr. Rota Lakus and Mr. Varga and those who supported it. All of these things are part of the process. We, we have to be able to listen to all people. And believe me, if, without doing that, we wouldn't have a And believe me, if without doing that, we wouldn't have a democratic process. So I, I'm glad everybody is is given their two cents on this thing. And I believe me, it'll only make it better if we do it. Uh, because I think even without it, we're going to have to think through uh, how to make the, that particular zone work for everybody. So thank you so much, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Vidic. Um, this is probably out of uh, normal decorum, but Mr. Ronaldakis, did you have a comment that you were looking to make?
Again, uh, just the way that the mor- the moratorium application is written is prohibits anything from occurring in the I I D zone. That's, that's my comment. I- i- it's poorly uh, worded at the end, the implementation. You know, I, I understand what Mr. Vidic is trying to do. Um, but again, the bylaw is written prohibits me from moving forward with any warehouse or distribution center. I don't see the need for it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that comes to the end of the hearing for um, the text amended application, Article thirty-three hundred point dash four, townwide temporary moratorium on warehouses, distribution centers and research facilities. Um, otherwise known as P Z dash two, three, dash six. Um, and I thank everyone for their input. Uh, I also thank everyone for their public comment that's been listed and either has been or will be reviewed by each of the members of the committee. So that closes the hearing. Uh, and again, item C under public hearings, for those of you who may have joined late, uh, P Z dash two, three, dash seven. Um, as the applicant, the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, we are seeking to not have the hearing happen tonight. We've put in with the uh, uh, Land Use Office to delay that. We need to discuss some uh, newfound legislation with our legal counsel on this and uh, work with that. So there will not be a hearing tonight on the uh, definition of primary residence uh, regarding short-term rentals. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, nothing under unfinished business at this time. Uh, under number eight, new business, uh, we open it up for discussion. And again, this is for the commission members only. Um, regarding uh, P Z dash two, three, dash eight, the application to state expired subdivision at Lakewood Lane. Uh, application, R C N, Ashford. Uh, just a little background and Mike will be very helpful in uh, assisting me on this. Um, just the background, this is the situation up on Lakewood Lane where uh, there's some issues with the roadway and the completion of the roadway and the bonding for it. And Mike had put a plan together. Uh, part of that plan was a, a notice of expiration regarding their subdivision development. And that was served to them. Uh, and their response, I guess, was quite positive according to Mike. Um, what do we need to do? They've got a couple of lots that they're looking to close. Um, they do want to be, again, they want to be responsive to us. They want to uh, continue uh, with the relationship. So what they have done, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, they've submitted, uh, uh, they've resubmitted an application. Basically, it is the same plan as before. There's no deviations, there's no modifications to it. They're just looking to resubmit to re-establish uh, the uh, expiration date of the subdivision. Uh, Mike, did you want to add to that?
I guess yes, but no, that was a pretty good uh, summary. Um, so yeah, uh, essentially, as you are aware, when you approve a subdivision, there is an expiration date, which is established by statute. This, the um, that is the date by which the applicant has to complete all of the public improvements. Uh, and so that's roadway, curb, drainage, whatever is specific to that development. In the particular case of this subdivision, which was originally approved in September two thousand and five. It expired accord, in accordance with statute, but the public improvements were not completed. So we notified them um, of the filing of the expiration and the, the process that is outlined, comes right out of statute. And it basically says that a new application or a new subdivision approval has to be obtained before any lots can, can be sold. So we, we effectively push stop on the development. Um, there are a couple of lots which are um, sort of in, in pause with, with being transferred or people interested in purchasing them. And um, before we can move forward with some of the um, the details, um, a new subdivision approval has to be issued. This does not deviate from the original subdivision in any way. There's no changes, modifications um, of any kind. It doesn't affect lots already sold or developed. There are people that live on lots in that development and it doesn't affect that in any way. And the last piece is that this will allow us to get an updated bond from the applicant. So they're required to provide um, a bond for the roadway, um, and any other public improvements basically at a one-to-one ratio. So the value of the improvements not yet completed must be provided in the form of a bond to the town. Um, so approval of this reapproval, if you will, of this subdivision, um, will allow us to work with them to get an updated bond. Because the town, the bond the town was carrying for the last four to five years was um, effectively well, well below what would be appropriate. Um, so that will be a condition. Um, I can answer any questions and then I have put together basically a motion with this information captured um, on paper, which I'm happy to share so you can read through.
And with their, I believe Mike, you had stated that um, with the uh, potential approval with the conditions, um, they were quite open to a, uh, not a conservative, but a uh, a value for the bond that would effectively cover what we needed covered. Uh, they didn't push back, they didn't negotiate, they simply said, you know, kind of fill in, fill in the blanks as to what you need.
Yeah, yep, so um, we are working with them to determine sort of an, an itemization of what we need and, and um, working with Sil Pauli from N E C O G to determine some quantities, but, but they have been very agreeable to this point. About making sure that we have a number that's, that we feel is appropriate to can, complete all the work. And I'm gonna just, I'm gonna share my screen so I can just take you through what I've got. And people can stop me um, or ask questions as I go. Okay. So hopefully you can see this. It's a little bit um, less traditional than what we would normally do, admittedly. Uh, but what I'm trying to make sure of is that the breadcrumb trail, if you will, is, is um, adequately documented. Because as of right now, if someone's doing a title search or looking to um, purchase or, or potentially develop one of the properties within the development, they're going to find the expiration notice. And so I want to make sure that this covers the next step in the process. So um, the commission's findings, the subdivision approval granted by this commission on nine twenty-six two thousand and five, previously expired in accordance with the notice of expiration filed on the land records. I list the date in the volume page. Um, I state that without reapproval of this application, subdivision deemed expired in accordance with statute and confirm that we are not approving any changes or deviations. I then have a couple of conditions. Um, I am referencing the specific plans that were previously approved. So this Lakewood subdivision, Ashford and Eastford, which is on record in the town clerk's office as this map. Um, that is already there. So I'm referencing that map because again, we don't have new plans. We're not changing anything. Then I reference a, a modified one-sheet plan that was filed in two thousand and eleven and, and approved by the commission. Condition two is that I'm stating that the new expiration date of this approval will be still in accordance with statute. But it, the clock starts as of this approval, so we're not going back to that from a, an expiration standpoint. And, and then I am um, clarifying in the uh, last comment that the um, below referenced lots, which are the six remaining lots still owned by the applicant, um, cannot be sold, transferred or conveyed or built upon until we receive the new public improvement bond. So again, this is not going to affect any privately held lot within the subdivision that has a house on it or whatever. Um, but it will create the parachute that the town would be looking for so that the developer doesn't transfer any of the lots currently under their ownership until we receive an adequate um, public improvement bond for the road. And I'm just gonna bring up one other plan. Just so that you can see what we're looking at here. Just to give you a sense of the overall development. And I don't know. Here we go. So just to give you a sense, this is the, this is an overall compilation plan, but this is the subdivision. Um, you can see here on the right-hand side, the um, the town line. So we're referencing the lots within this. It shows the approximate location of the road. And then we have the full plan set, which has been attached. With that, I will stop talking and the, the applicant and their, their team is here. Um, so if you have questions or, or I've missed something, um, they're also available.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Um. Any questions of Mike or um, the applicant's representatives?
Yeah, this is um, Janet. I, I was wondering who's um, who's going to do the work on the road? Is, is this the applicant's responsibility or will the town do it?
Um, so the applicant, so the, the subdivision was approved with the intent that this become a town road, but it has not been accepted by the town. So we will take a bond. Um, they will then have the ability to go forward and sell the lots and then they will complete the work. When we determine it's been done in accordance with the plans and is satisfactory, then we will um, release the bond and then we can, then the Board of Selectmen can accept the road. But it is not the town's responsibility. They'll have to pay those costs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Falletti, Bill, you have a question or statement? You are on mute if you were trying to talk to us.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
Mike, I was just asking, um, in reference to your uh, suggested motion. I noticed there's no, there's no dollar amount in that. Um, but you're comfortable that we will reach the uh, the figures needed to uh, bring the road up to uh, town standards?
Yeah, so the reason why we don't have the bond amount specifically listed is because we'll need to work with them and with Sil Pauli to determine the exact number based upon and agreed upon scope of work. So that's why the language I have in there basically says an amount deemed satisfactory to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Hey, Mike, this is Nord. I had a chance to recently inspect this uh, Lakeview Drive or whatever you want to call it, from one end to the other. And uh, the appearance of the road, it looks like it's the best road in town of Ashford.
Y- yes, um, so basically, one of the, the main components of work that is outstanding is the top coat. So the binder course is down and that's what you see. Uh, it's been down for several years and they're not, when the roads are conduct, constructed, they're not intended for that to remain exposed for the length of time that it has been. And um, there are some, some potholes and some minor things that we need to rectify. But the bond that the town was previously holding is effectively expired and, and doesn't exist. So what we want to make sure of is that before the rest of these lots are developed, we are in a position where we have a bond. So we can make sure that the road's completed so that when the town ultimately does go through the consideration process of taking this over as a town road, we're sure that it's held to all of the public standards for, for a roadway so that we don't have any issues a year after we take it on that the town then has to pay for.
Hey, hey, Mike. Um, what else is needed to be done prior to putting down the final coat? Is it build out another remaining lots or?
There will be some repair work that needs to be done. Um, so the, there was a two hundred and fifty or two hundred and something thousand dollar bond that was originally provided by um, the previous owner when the subdivision was approved. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, early eighteen, it was, the bond was reduced to a hundred thousand dollars for roadway, for the completion of the roadway. But we don't have any information that we can find that actually says what that means. Generally speaking, we would see a hundred linear feet of pavement, eighty-five linear feet of curbing, two catch basins, two manhole covers, whatever. There would be a, a quantities list which, which shows us how we got to that number. Um, and we don't have that. Um, so we have to re-engineer all of that work. The other thing that, that the applicant um, let me know earlier is that the bond was previously being held by Peoples Bank. And when Peoples Bank was acquired by M and T, they sent the money back to R C N and they never notified the town. So um, even the hundred thousand that we thought we had doesn't exist. Um, and so if the, if the property owner were to walk away tomorrow, which which I don't believe they have any intention of doing and, and they wouldn't have responded with all of this if they, if they did, the town has absolutely no funds to cover the remainder of that work, which is why we're having these six lots sort of held as that, that chip. Um, so the trigger point here is a reapproval with the condition that they give us an updated bond before they sell. So that we're not sliding those cards across the table until we know that the town is adequately protected. And I hope that makes sense.
And, and just for clarification, Mike, uh, from what you had talked to me about is that it wasn't R C N's necessary responsibility to inform us. It was the banks, in your experience, has been the bank's responsibility to inform us. And that didn't take place.
Yes, every situation we've ever, I've ever seen is that the bank will notify the town. And there is, there was language in the previous bond about cancellation and, and shall not be canceled un- un- unless on the following circumstances. But I think that because the bank was actually acquired, there may have been a um, a difference in process, but every other time we would receive notification. So yeah, this is not because of some um, malintent or s- or some, some action taken by the applicant to try and do something negative or, or, or anything along those lines. This is really just process.
And uh, representing R C N, is that uh, uh, Mr. Peterson?
Hi, Mark Peterson, Gardner and Peterson Associates. Uh, with me is also Will Downs from R C N. Um, I'm more involved on the, the engineering side, uh, where needed. Uh, I am working for a couple of potential new homeowners, so their plans are on pause uh, until we work through this bonding concern and reapproval. So um, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions. Um, but I think Mike did a great job discussing the process and where we are.
So you'll be working with uh, Sil Pauli from uh, N E C O G when it comes to uh, the uh, list of items we feel are needed for completion?
I expect I will be, yes.
Didn't want you to waste your time sitting in on our meeting. Thank you. Uh, any questions for uh, either the applicant's representative or? Any questions for either the applicant's representative or Mike on this?
I'm good, Jeff. I think I understand what's going on.
Okay. All right, to that end, what I'll ask is a, a motion. To. Approve the reapplication with the conditions as outlined by Mike and the write-up that he provided. Is there a motion for such?
This is Janet. I hope I'll move and thank Mike for his work on this.
I'll second that, Alex.
Alex will second it. Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll ask for those, as those approving the say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Downs. Thanks, Mike, for your work on that. We really appreciate it. Look forward to getting this development finalized. Okay, moving on to the discussion on the hearing we just had on PZ twenty-two dash twenty-three dash two application, special application. For rural business at Three Lakeside Drive. Or Kristen Masico. Open to discussion. I know you've given some, Nord gave some input. And Janet did also. Any further discussion regarding this application? Or qualifications? Yes, go ahead.
Generally speaking, I think this is one of our easiest decisions to make. Sounds like a good plan and we. Should go forward and recommend that we adopt it.
That's the thing, the easy decisions usually wants to get us, you know.
Like, like the one dealing with gravel pits.
Any further discussion from the commission?
Jeff, I got a question. Like. I was looking through the regulations earlier and.
Yep.
Switched the pages, but I, I think there's a. Time limit associated with. The home occupation rural business approval. If it is approved. Is that, am I reading the regulations correctly?
Talk to me. I might have missed a couple of words that you said there. Go ahead. Say it again, please.
Should this be approved? Is there a time limit for the regulations? Where that it's approved for?
You mean the rural business?
Yes.
Uh, I'm trying to think of what the permitting is. I had this section here just a second ago.
So did I. I can't find it. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, sure. Put me on the spot.
It's three hundred dash seventeen.
Thank you.
And if you go to. I, that's where home occupations and rural businesses are.
Yeah, that's where I am. I'm trying to find it.
So yeah, if you look at. It's three hundred dash seventeen I and then it's to be the initial home occupation zoning permit rural business shall be issued for two years.
There you go. I knew there was a limitation. And then reviewed for every two years after that. Okay. Any other input?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
I think that review was intended if what was being proposed really wasn't being done or something to that effect.
Right.
Yeah, I think you're right. Dick, I, I think it's appropriate. Just making sure all the ducks are in a row here.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the application for the rural business?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to make the motion.
If William moves to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Doug seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
Those, those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Good luck and congratulations and good luck. Okay, so there's that one. Now we are into discussion on PZ dash two, three dash six regarding the. Temporary moratorium on warehouses, distribution centers, and research facilities. As apply, as being applied for by Mr. Charles Viddick. Open for discussion from the group?
I'd, I'd like to weigh in on something that Paul brought up. Frankly, there was a concerted effort. At least I experienced it with people bombarding me with emails that I finally had to block a number of people so it didn't have to delete them. I even had someone try to put one of those signs in front of my house. And till I went out there and told him I didn't want it out there. And so, I mean, this whole, the tenant of what has been aroused by this is, is beyond anything. I've ever experienced in twenty plus years of serving on boards and commissions in this town.
Thank you, Richard. Other input from commissioners?
Yeah, this is Janet.
Professional planner, but. I want to do what's best for the town. And I think this amendment is unfair to the landowner and unnecessary because of all the restrictions that we have already placed in there.
Let me ask you, Nord, do you see any benefit to a. Change in the wording or some type of moratorium that allows us the opportunity to. Address. The zoning in the area. Without having. Have an application fall in the middle of our laps while we're doing this? Or is it just, is it just the whole idea of a moratorium? At all?
I think that it will require review no matter what happened. And I still think that the moratorium would be unfair and unnecessary.
Okay, thank you.
I'd, I'd weigh in besides my earlier comment, Jeff. A moratorium and what is in this very incomplete written document that was submitted. It does not make any sense and, and frankly. We have been working through and until we were kind of overwhelmed by the events over the past three months. We've been working on changes and updates to the land use regulations on a, a regular basis. We don't need. Someone to from, to, to come in and help direct that effort for us. I think. This group working with. Mike Diamato and with the attorney, I think is perfectly capable of tackling amendments to this zone and other, others. Other parts of the regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Bill Falletti, you have your hand up.
I do, but I think Janice had asked earlier, Janet did.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Bill. That's all right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I. Have several questions and then a couple of comments. If you don't mind.
Not at all. Go ahead.
One, we, you know, I want to forgive Paul for being tired. He's one of our fire department that was up all night fighting a structured fire. In town and his efforts as well as his department's efforts are much appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'd also like to. Comment on, on what we've been all been going through for the last three months. And I like to look on the brighter side of things. I think there's a lot more people. Involved in communication and partaking in the. In the whole process than we're normally used to, which is probably an understatement. But I would encourage those people, if you've got strong feelings or whatever. We've got an election coming up in November. Contact your chairman of your town committees or the town clerk. And consider running for office. There are many of them available. And, and I'd strongly encourage you to do so. No matter which side of this issue you happen to be on. A question, Mr. Chairman, have, have we got a. Have you got an opinion back from council regarding this proposed text amendment?
I believe. No, we have not gotten an official opinion back from them at this point. Mike, you and I were discussing a number of items that had been discussed, but was this one thing you and Ken had gone over at all?
I mean, we, we talked about. Moratoria and just the overall. Mechanism. So there was no specific question that I really asked him to opine on. The one thing that I was confirming. Previously was that. The. And as the applicant mentioned, the, the, the language as submitted. The duration, all of these things have to be tailored specific to the purpose. And I, I guess since I have the mic, I would just. Sort of reaffirm. To the commission that this is, this is very atypical, as the applicant mentioned. Typically speaking, the commission, like with cannabis, would say we're gonna have a moratorium because we want to. Endeavor this, to go through this process and we'd like to have the time to do it. So the commission, I mean, you're making two decisions in some respects here. The first decision is, what do you feel? About the moratorium? Or, but the second is sort of confirming that you are going to go through the process because to, you have to adopt a moratorium with a purpose. So the commission has to be on board with going through the process. Because that is the only reason you would adopt a moratorium. And if we were to approve the application. And then not go through the process, that is some of the issues that. The applicant talked about and I'm sort of confirming that. We've got to do this process if we approve it because that is the only way the, the moratoria is supported.
And Mike, to that same point, there's nothing to stop us other than having. Large discussions like we've been having the past three months from working on updates to the regulations. We've been doing it for the. Past number of years and we have every intent to continue to do that. So this moratorium is not. A prerequisite to updating the regulations.
Correct. There, this is not the only mechanism that you have at your disposal to update regs. You don't, you don't need to have a moratorium to revise or adopt new regulations.
And to go back to your original question, Bill, um, you know, obviously Mike has had some discussion with. Ken on this in regarding moratorium in general, but. Yeah, with some of the input I think we've gotten tonight with some of the interpretations that are there, even from the commissioners as well as the. Public comment, it's probably something we should take to Ken and get his input. On when it comes to some of those issues that were brought up regarding verbiage and its limitations or what it does and what it does not limit.
Yeah, I think I agree. That would be a good idea. So also I went through all of the materials submitted, the public opinion and everything. And I didn't notice any staff comment. I'm going to assume there, there wasn't any at this time. Written staff comment.
Yeah, yeah, no, there was not.
Okay. Okay. Another question I have, what, what is the timing on us revisiting the POCD? Are we due or is it coming up?
POCD would need to be completed and submitted to OPM before July first of 2025. So we have approximately just under two years. But it is some, I mean, we don't have to wait to that long. Obviously, it's something that in my last statement for the last meeting on May eighth was something that. I would like to make as a, and for the commission to make as a priority to align. The statements and the information that POCD with our regulation changes that we will entertain for the. IID and any other zone that we really need to update.
Yeah, I will wholeheartedly support that, Jeff, and, and whatever my office can do to help facilitate that. I think it's important because obviously during this process, I think there's some sort of contradictory language. Can be left up to interpretation that we have to take a close look at as to what the intent and that sort of thing is. The other thing I just like to touch on, you know, somebody had mentioned that there were 1,200 signatures on a petition. And I've heard about the petition. I've seen some of the petition, but just for the record, there was no formal petitions ever filed with the town clerk. I saw several varieties of petitions that were out. I think. A couple that I saw had gross exaggerations or misstatements of the facts on. So there was no official. Petition ever filed. Formally with the town about any of this or with anybody else. I never saw any completed. I mean, there's a normal process. That we would typically go through with petitions and none of that was ever done. I know we talk about. The, the proponents of this feature, of, of the proposal that we had in the zone. Most of the emphasis that we talked about and considerations were financial and. There are financial considerations that have to be taken into the long-term planning in our community. Right now, the formula that we have for property tax, real estate taxes, overburdening our taxpayers. Ninety-three percent of every tax dollar is levied on our property taxpayers. And, and that's the reason I believe over 10 years ago, we went into specializing. A zone on where we had a potential of generating more revenue and taking some of the burden off of the taxpayers. That's why at the time, as a resident taxpayer, I supported it going to the next stage. But finances is one thing and I certainly needs a category by itself. But the other thing is it's critical for our town. To look at things that are going to be bringing jobs into our town. You know, I talked earlier about Paul spending the night helping the department fight a, a, a structured fire in town. Our fire department down is, is down to less than fifteen active members. It, it, it's a burden that these folks are carrying that is going to have to be addressed. We don't have people working in town anymore. They don't have the time. They can't come in from a Mansfield. Or a Manchester or wherever they may be working to help assist fires. We help that with our public works department, but there's a limit that we can do with that and there's a toll that takes. So that's another vital when we're revisiting this. This whole scenario and the experience that we've all had over the three months, it's something that we've got to keep in mind. Another process that, that, and I know we followed. Strict statutory requirements and I know it was totally in the jurisdiction as it should have been within the planning and zoning. But if you look at it, the way that it, it, it worked itself out, the proponents never really had an opportunity. To, to, to have open discussions with the board, with your commission. And talk about any sort of compromises. I think that they offered a couple that they thought might have helped. One of the ones that comes to mind is the height of the structure. Originally, they were talking to seventy-five feet. They negotiated with themselves, brought it down to fifty-five feet. I don't know if they would have brought it down to forty or thirty-five feet or whatever, but the process as we have it in place right now. Didn't give them the opportunity to even do that. And I think it's something we look, have to look at in the future. Some of the comments that were made in public comment. Mrs. Asibo brought some up and I went up on the websites for the. Deep regarding mineral deposits and that. I, I found it very interesting. I think that that's something that. That if we're going to include and change our rig some. I think that that's something that that if we're going to include and change our rig somehow on requirements that we should have that testing. I mean, they've been, I looked at the graphs, the deepest put out, and it looks like most of our town is in that potential zone. And it's concerning. So the public input we got, I think, is valuable, and I think we all need to take a look at it. And I appreciate your time, Jeff. That's I, for what it's worth, and I don't have a vote in it. I'm an ex officio of your commission. I'm opposed to moratorium at this time. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Bill. Janet, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm a little conflicted here. I think on one hand, it would be nice for the commission to have the time to really look at what we need for zoning for this area. Ruth Cutler had quoted or quote her saying, you know, the site determines the use, and I think we need to look at this site carefully to determine what could safely be put on it. A moratorium would ensure that we're not distracted by another text amendment or special permit request that would, you know, eat up a lot of our time. And we could be more efficient in in getting the work done, which I think everybody wants us to do. I think oh, the more the wording of the moratorium is problematic and perhaps we should take time to, you know, reword it with Ken Slaters and Mike Tomatoes' input.
Jeff, I'd like to address some of the things that Bill pointed out. He talked about being able to do due diligence on any special permit. We have bill within the current regulations, the requirement if something large were to be built up in any place in the town that we require a minimum of one percent, I think, I don't even think in front of me, but a certain percentage of the cost of the development or fifty thousand dollars, whichever is the greater. So the town would have funds to do all of the technical due diligence, hire consultants, do core drilling, whatever you'd you'd think about doing, should there be a special permit applied for for this zone or any other zone within the town. So we haven't fully done everything as far as revisions of our land use regulations. And frankly, there's a lot of things that the regular business of the commission that we need to get back to. And frankly, having been the head of the P O C D, the last right and haven't taken the lead on the rewrite of our regulations in the past, you know, it's a lot of extra work that we need to get back to. And I think, Jeff, we should, not at this meeting, I guess, but our next meeting, we should start to populate the P O C D. You know, committee that's going to work on it. And that can include members of boards and commissions, but it can also include people that are not on boards. As I recall, like, for instance, the energy section of the P O C D had Susan Eastwood and some of her group that helped work on that. We had people that were looking at housing. So we had the senior housing and others on it. So for the different sections of the P O C D, we brought in the people that had the greatest interest in those areas. So it's not like one group was meeting all the time, but we tried to draw in people. You know, as it was appropriate to work on it. I'd encourage anyone that would be interested in participating in the P O C D this next go around. Get a hold of it. It's on the town website. Look at the various sections and see where you might be able to contribute to those sections.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Dick. I know it actually ten years ago or almost ten years, eight years ago, it seemed like pulling teeth sometimes to get people interested. So hopefully, you know, from what Bill had mentioned too about the interest level that has peaked, especially regarding the the indications and the ramifications of the P O C D and what it can do for us when it comes to both protecting and giving us guidelines for moving forward. It is a very important document and gaining input from the boards of commissioners as well as interested citizens. As we've seen, there's a lot of interest in our citizens now, I think will be a big, big help in identifying what's important and where we want to go. That being said, um, I just want to I just wanted to give a little bit of input when it came to the moratorium itself. I I think that we should gain input from Mike and with Ken Slater's assistance. As to what's being there, I like the idea of what Janet offered up, possibly a rewrite of what's there to give us the time to breathe and do things like you said, move forward on items we really need to get working on, including P O C D as well as the rigs themselves. You know, rewording the language, not making it townwide, making it more specific. And again, I think one of the bigger things is dealing with text amendments right now, maybe not entertaining them at this point while we are working on potentially regulations and text amendment going forward. Does it make sense to, you know, have these insulating ourselves? It probably makes sense to insulate ourselves from having these requirements and going through the hearings and all like this when we haven't we don't have the time to do make our own opportunity and our own information known and shared with the group as we work through this. So.
Mr.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Janet.
I would just like to point out that I think you know, people talk about fairness to the landowners, but I think having clear regulations that they can look at and understand is fair to them. Right now, you know, they they spent all this time on the past text amendment to have it turned down. I think we need to have regulations that let people know what is acceptable. So when they when they apply for something, they have a good chance of having it approved. I think that is more fair to the landowners.
Yeah. Jeff. Yeah. I do not believe one bit that we need a moratorium to continue to work at the land use regulations, you know. We completely rewrote the R A section without a moratorium. We've been working on the D N B rental kind of stuff without a moratorium. And the only moratorium we've ever put in place in the town has been on the cannabis, and that was a simple decision that we were not going to permit that until we had a better sense of where things were going in the state. We don't need a moratorium to work in the land use regulations. And we certainly don't need what's in this document that's been submitted. And putting it out to be rewritten, I frankly don't think it makes any sense. I mean, I would, when it comes time, I would put forth the proposal that we reject this moratorium. And bring that to a vote.
Thank you, Dick. Any other input from the commission? Hearing none. The only thing that I would potentially table any type of vote or motion is gaining input from town council. If the committee feels that they're, you know, the competence level in what we're addressing and what we're looking at with not require that, then, you know, I would seek a motion at this point.
Can I make a motion that we table the discussion until we get input? From Mike and Ken?
Janet, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Alex seconds. And I am going to ask for a commissioner vote by tally. Alex? Do you support? Yes, yay?
Yes.
Alex, yay. Janet?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Richard?
No. I don't think we need to get counsel on this.
Catherine? You're still on mute, Catherine, if you're trying to reach us.
Yes.
Nord?
No.
Okay, I will vote yes to bring Ken in, just to have him take a look at it, make sure we're going down the right track here or give us the benefit of any other further information from other towns. So we'll table this, a decision on this until we get input from Ken. The vote goes five to two. And thank you for the input and we'll bring it up on the agenda for next meeting. Hopefully have Ken on board with us to talk about also. Okay, that was the temporary moratorium. We are not discussing at this time the primary residents. Zoning officer report, Michael.
The only thing I guess I would note at this point is that we are now taking our our staff zoning permits online through the town's permitting system. So we're now, those are included just like you would with a building permit instead of having to process them manually. Got a number of enforcement things which we're trying to work through with health and building and Ken and just try to prioritize based upon what we're dealing with in the various departments. And working on some of the stuff that was the subject of your agenda tonight.
Thank you. Mike? So to that end, do I see a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Alex second.
Richard seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your efforts and your attention. I can't echo enough the citizenry and your hard work. And in looking at these very, very important items for the town, I can't express that enough. My appreciation and your thoughtfulness to this board. So again, thank you and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.